Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Education to order this evening. I do apologize for the delay. Statement of adequate notice by Board President. Students in New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 8118 and Vias Channel 24. And by filing such notice with the township clerk. In addition, notice of this meeting has been broadcasted on the local Old Bridge station on Cable 15 and Vias 22. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, September 17, 2013. The Board will take formal action on agenda items.
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act does not interfere with the business of the public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of the Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Andriani.
President.
Borsili.
Here.
Colabella.
Here.
DePrima.
Here.
Donofrio.
Here.
Solakowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Quormexis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please stand for the pledge. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. I'd like to acknowledge the deaths of the following retired staff members. Lois Murray, retired ESL coordinator in the district. Mr. William Camp, retired print shop teacher. And also Patricia Pandozi, retired secretary. I also would like to acknowledge the lives that were lost on September 11, 2001. Please keep them in your thoughts for a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have any administrative changes this evening?
Yes, in the action agenda on page five, Roman numeral 23, that's XXIIII, item number 2A is administratively removed. And also in the same resolution, item number 2B, the effective date should be changed to September 23, 2013. I may have done that too fast on page five, Roman numeral 22, that's XXIIII, item number 2A is administratively removed. And item number 2B, in the same resolution, is changed to effective date September 23, 2013. Thank you, Mr. President.
Approval of the minutes?
Do you know if you'll make a motion to approve the minutes?
Andriani will second.
Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Andriani.
Yes.
Borsili.
Yes.
Colabella.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Donofrio.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Dunn. Yes. Motion's passed.
Recognition. Move the Board of Education to acknowledge Southwood PTA for their generous donation. A Southwood school of $20,000 to be used for the purchase of technology equipment. Do we have someone to hear from? Yes, we do. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Foley, and I am the principal of Southwood School. I'm joined at the podium this evening with three co-chairs of the Southwood Elementary School Tricky Tray Committee, Stephanie Stellingworth, Sherry Palazolo, and Melissa Collins. When I was fortunate enough to be appointed to Southwood School two years ago as principal, I was thrilled at the opportunity to work with such wonderful children and such supportive parents. Upon walking through the school during my first visit, I was slightly concerned by the limited amount of technology that the children in my school had available to them. And so I brought my concerns to the PTA, and I was so thrilled by the concern of the parents in a school which is not affluent by any means, but certainly the picture of very hard-working, American families that truly put their children first and care so much about their school and their community. So the three ladies who are standing with me this evening suggested having a tricky tray, and it was the first large tricky tray event that Southwood was trying, and we thought we'd give it a shot. And I have to tell you, they had a very small number of volunteers with them that first year, but they did have the support of the rest of our PTA, and we did move forward. And I'm so grateful for the help of the ladies who are up here and the volunteers that they had, because they truly spent countless hours on behalf of our children. So our first tricky tray was in 2012, and they earned more than $19,000. The next tricky tray was in 2013, and they earned over $18,000. Incidentally, our next tricky tray is May 2, 2014. They held the tricky tray events at the VFW Post in Sarerville, and we certainly had a wonderful turnout by our families and our community. The parents at Southwood were kind enough to earmark $10,000 of the amount from the first tricky tray and another $10,000 from the second tricky tray. When I arrived at Southwood, we had three SMART boards, and I'm pleased to announce that our PTA was able to purchase another six. And I'd like to thank the Board for allotting me money in my technology budget, as they did with all of the schools in the district, that we were now able to provide a SMART board or a PolyVision board in every single classroom. That includes our homeroom classrooms, academic support rooms, and resource rooms at Southwood School. So it's been a tremendous accomplishment during the past two years. And again, I'd like to thank the Board very much for the wonderful support that I have at Southwood. So thank you very much.
Move the Board of Education to recognize Casey Dennison, Old Bridge High School senior, for achieving the high rank of Eagle Scout for Troop 219. Ms. Fazio from the Old Bridge High School Administration is there, and I believe our...
Casey, come on down.
I believe, my friend, from the Board of Education, Ms. Andriani will be joining you up there with the certificate.
Good evening, Mr. Sittadino, Board of Education members, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight is my pleasure to honor Casey Dennison, who recently became an Eagle Scout. I have known Casey for the past six years, as he was a student in my sixth-grade Language Arts Literacy class. I must say that one of the most rewarding aspects of being up at the high school now is that I get the opportunity to see my old middle-school students become fine, young, amazing adults such as Casey. As you may know, to earn the Eagle rank, a scout must complete a community service project. Casey created a mini-park on the grounds of the Madison Township Historical Society, Thomas Moore Museum, which is located right across the street. As a member, he saw a need to beautify and preserve this historical site, and he took on that challenge. Just recently, I reached out to Casey, who was one of our finest TV production students, we just pulled him off the cameras back there, to help us produce a video to capture the new security measures we have instituted at the high school. Casey and a group of his peers took on the challenge and created a lighthearted, yet serious video, which we proudly debuted at our grade-level assemblies at the beginning of the year. Casey's vision of the message we wanted to convey was perfection. Casey, you are the epitome of a Boy Scout. You are trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, cheerful, and brave. And on behalf of Old Bridge High School Administration, I applaud you on becoming an Eagle Scout. Congratulations, what an accomplishment. Of course you do.
Good evening. Ms. Fazio is absolutely right. Casey is the epitome of scouting, and what a wonderful event this is. I know that his family is here tonight to celebrate in just one more wonderful thing that's going to happen in Casey's life. I happen to know Casey personally. He's in my troop. And Casey is the 48th Eagle Scout from Troop 219. And those of you... Those of you who either watch on TV or come to the Board meetings know that I never let the opportunity pass about Eagle Scouts without me saying something about that. And I'm beginning to call Old Bridge Township "The Eagle's Nest," because scouting, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, is alive and well and kicking very strong in Old Bridge. Casey is a fine, dedicated young man. He's an honor student. He's an AP student. He's looking for Tier One colleges, and he's just absolutely great. We also have more than just community service. There's over 300 separate requirements that are necessary to become an Eagle Scout, and they run the gamut from swimming badges to sewing and cooking badges to community service. And that Eagle project that everybody says, "Oh, sure, are you an Eagle Scout?" People have no clue. The book is 200 pages, and all of that is developing the project, developing the budget, securing the financing, getting the volunteers. And the scout that is the Eagle Scout applicant doesn't actually do the project. They direct the project. They're a project manager. And all of that, put that all together, and just makes for a wonderful package. Casey, I couldn't be prouder, and we have a certificate here for you.
Have a motion for recognitions, items one and two.
I'd like to make that motion, and congratulations, Casey, items one and two.
Can I have a second?
Do you know if you'll...
Very well, thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Borsili.
Yes.
Colabella.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Donofrio.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Very well, thank you. I see that we don't have our high school representative... I believe he is here. He is here this evening. Okay, very well. Come up to the podium? Thank you.
My name is Chris Simone, and I'm the Student Senate President at Old Bridge High School. Last week was our first week of school, and it went extremely well in the high school. We started off the year by having grade-level assemblies, and in each grade-level assembly, we talked about our new security procedures here. The high school so far seemed to take them really well. Myself, Casey Dennison, Erica Coglan, Amanda Firino, John Kapang Pangan, Carolyn Coglan, Shaila Guzani, we all came together and made a security video that we showed to each grade level. And like Ms. Fazio stated earlier, it was humorous, but it got the point across. It went really well. We are off to a great year in sports so far, and you can stay updated by following ob_kosb on Twitter. It's run by Coach Beverly. He does a great job. He updates for every single sport, from tennis to gymnastics to football. This week is our tailgate game on Friday night. It's going to be a purple-out. We'll be selling shirts in all lunch periods during the school. They're going to be $5 each. October 2 is going to be our senior dinner cruise for all the seniors that are attending. It's roughly 300 kids, so it's going to be a packed boat, and it'll be a really good time. For all seniors, they can find that information by following obhsclass2014 on Twitter as well. Future dates are September 20 is the tailgate this Friday, October 2 is the senior dinner cruise, October 17 is the college fair, October 18, the next day, is going to be the pink-out, and October 24 is the homecoming dance, followed by the homecoming game the next day. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report. Do we need a motion to accept his report? Okay, very good. Moving forward, we'll go into the superintendent's report. While Mr. Kuduski is just setting up the PowerPoint presentation, it's very brief. The Board members at the podium, you have a handout copy of it. I just want to tell you that I received information that one of our Old Bridge High School, Old Bridge student alum, Evan Rigerio, will be appearing this Friday, September 20, at 4:00 PM on the Ellen DeGeneres Show. She's having him on to highlight his overcoming cancer and remaining positive through that experience and becoming quite an accomplished tap dancer. So if you have time in your schedule, or if you have a DVR, please set it to watch Evan Rigerio this Friday at 4:00 PM on the Ellen Show. And I think Evan really is an example of the positives that come out of this community, this wonderful community. So thank you, Evan. Okay, so in front of us, we have just a brief PowerPoint presentation that I'm putting before you as to... Tonight, there's a vote for a full-day kindergarten implementation, and why in the view of this administration should we do it at this point? The last time this was brought to the public was 2008, and at that time, in the elementary student body alone, we had 3,978 students. At the most recent total of June of 2013, we had 3,649 students, a difference of 329 students or one of our average elementary schools. So during the course of that time, we've basically lost an average elementary school of enrollment. And that lack of enrollment or low enrollment is what allows us to go forward at this time with the implementation of full-day kindergarten at a lower cost. In 2008, the proposal that's on the day is in front of me states that construction costs budgeted for all 12 elementary schools exceeded $25 million. The proposal that sits before us tonight has a total projected cost of upgrades in our buildings of approximately $550,000, which is a significant decrease. And you could say, "Well, why such a decrease?" Well, if we actually had to build an elementary school, it probably cost us around $25 million. So if we're losing that many students in that many classrooms, that's what gives us the space to provide and the cost savings at this time. Additional financial data support that might help us in our decision is that the previous formula for state aid for students, per pupil state aid for students, was that no matter if it was a half-day kindergarten or a full-day kindergarten, you were provided with half-state aid for kindergarten. Now, some districts in the state of New Jersey already had full-day kindergarten. As of this time, the most recent data tells us that out of the 92,000 students in kindergarten, 70,000 of them are in a full-day kindergarten facility, or 76% of them. That means that the 24% that are not represented here in Old Bridge, that are our students, represents a lower 24% that are not in a full-day program. There's also the transportation savings of approximately $250,000, and that is a soft estimate of what we'd save on cutting back middle-of-the-day routes and some of our special routes that we have to outsource. Our student meals program currently, of the students that are in our elementary kindergarten program, they do not have lunch in school. So we do not have the opportunity to get the federal money back from that program. If they were in school having lunch, we would estimate that we'd receive $60,000 a year in federal financial aid. Going forward next year, according to our resources, we are learning that Old Bridge should look to gain new ratables next year in excess of $80 million, which should help the tax base support this program. I spoke to, I recently spoke to a Realtor from Better Homes, Tara, and she actually called me about reading the article that was in the Suburban and Sentinel a few weeks ago, and asked about when I knew this would be going forward, because many of the clients coming into her were asking for communities that had a full-day kindergarten. And she said that that question has come up more in the past 10 years, as 10 years ago, most didn't have a full-day program. And you'll hear the many people say that kindergarten's not even mandated in New Jersey, but more districts have been going towards full-day kindergarten, and to that percent that I talked about before, that 76% of the students are in a full-day program at this time. So that's the financial end that drives it. But for me, as an educator, the real indicator is the educational portion that really drives the need for full-day kindergarten. Forty-six states, including the District of Columbia, adopted the Common Core standards. Wasn't adopted by Old Bridge. It wasn't, we didn't go out and vet it and say, "What curriculum do you want to follow?" The Department of Education, the state of New Jersey, under the appointment of Christopher Serf, adopted the Common Core standards. And the Common Core standards were not written for a half-day kindergarten program. It was written with a full-day kindergarten in mind. And what effect it had around the state of New Jersey was districts such as Flemington, the Flemington Raverton School District, which is an I district and has time to do such studies, and the financial resources to do such studies, did a curriculum mapping study. And I spoke to Michelle Cook from that district recently, and they found through their curriculum mapping that in a two-and-a-half-hour program, they could only reach half of the anchor standards that are in the kindergarten Common Core standards. How did that result in their own district and community? Well, the first-grade teachers spent the first part of the year covering the second half of the kindergarten curriculum. And then that had a spiraling effect going forward. They also saw experienced additional costs for remediation, as students needed extra help or identified with IEPs later on, because they had fallen so far behind. The Department of Education cites that you can, just the initiatives alone, the early implementation, you could see to experience a savings of 20% off the total startup costs from later on, from not having to identify those students. That district, they explored cuts in the kindergarten programs and activities just to meet the ELA and math standards. Most districts now, which were incorporating the Common Core standards, have a 90-minute ELA or reading block and a 90-minute mathematics block. So if you only have a two-and-a-half-hour program compared to their peers across the state, we are already set way far behind. That does not include the explorative time that kindergartners need, the reactive play time they need in the classroom, and the socialization that is necessary for a kindergartner or a five-year-old to develop. A half-day program does not allow for inquiry-based instruction to support the informal text. And what do I mean by that? Well, the informal text is included as part of the Common Core standards, and that's a mandate in the Common Core standards. They have to move away from more Dick and Jane books to more reading about science and biology and the community. And for a kindergartner or a five-year-old, you just can't tell them about the anatomy of a frog without showing them the anatomy of the frog and the experience of exploring that. They're not as much as an auditory learner. They're visual learners. They're tactile learners. They have to have hands-on experiences. And within a half-day program, you're not going to have time for that. Additionally, there's a superficial introduction of concepts in a half-day program that manifests itself through a spiral of remediation up until grade three, as you're getting them ready for testing. The push comes in first and second grade, when these students are behind, and you need to get them ready for grade-three testing. I spoke to Dr. Ellen Wallach. She's from the Division of Early Childhood Education, and her statement was, "A half-day program is inadequate to teach the Common Core, never mind to master it." The last person I spoke to, and probably the biggest drive for full-day kindergarten in the state of New Jersey from the Department of Education, is Dr. Tracy Severance. I met with her a few times this year, and she's the chief academic officer for the Department of Education, and I found her statement to be the most alarming. She said, "I'm really worried about the future of districts with a half-day kindergarten. It is really a disservice." So what I'm telling you today is this: As an educator, I look at this and equate to a pandemic. But there's good news. We know it's coming, and we know how to react to it. 76% of the state students in New Jersey are already receiving the treatment for it, which is a full-day program. We can choose through our actions to inoculate our students with a full-day program to prepare them for this. The opposite of that is not doing anything, hoping it works out in the best, and then subjecting our students to remediation or hospitalization later on, as we look to fix the problems that weren't serviced when they were in kindergarten. So I'm hoping that we don't do that to our students going forward, and they're prepared and given the opportunities to be successful, not just within their peers in Old Bridge, because that's not the way the state scores work anymore. Our children are peered against the students in kindergartens. It doesn't matter if you're in A district to an I district. Depends on how you do on the state test. And that sounds scary to say about a kindergarten student, but this is not 10, 15 years ago. This is now, when testing depends, gives a greater weight as to what goes on into our schools, and when, within a few years, in that third grade, they'll be preparing to take this first state test. Thank you for listening to me tonight, and thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. Sittadino, for your superintendent's report, which also coincides with progress towards goals. Mr. Mayor, is there any communication this evening, correspondence?
No, there's not.
Thank you. My fellow Board members, are there any committee reports this evening?
Yeah, Mr. President, I guess I could start.
Thank you, Mr. DePrima.
I had a Food Service/Athletic Complex Events Committee meeting last week. Some of the topics discussed were, Michelle Feliciano gave an update on how food service is going. It was only a week, a few days into the school year, so there wasn't much to talk about. We spoke about SERF safe training and the people that have not been trained, because with the new stand, any functions that go on, somebody, a certified person has to be in the stand at all times, whether it be the PTSA or an outside group. The big thing we spoke about was, it's a little late, but it's, I guess, better late than never. Mr. Donofrio and myself had discussed this casually, and we never really pursued it, but now we did, having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the stand. I presented it to the PTSA last night, since they are, I guess, the main tenant of the stands, and everybody there was on board. I've never had a proposal for my committee meetings yet, so I think I propose that to you guys now, and if everybody's on board with it, we're going to go ahead with, you know, Mrs. Luci volunteered to contact the press and township dignitaries, and it's going to be open, obviously, to all of Old Bridge. We've talked intentively, October 18, it's a home game. It's also Pinkout Day, where the players have some kind of pink part of their uniform. The stands will be filled with pink, all in honor of breast cancer awareness. We thought it'd be a nice way to segue into what could be a good event for the community. We thought it'd be a nice way to segue into what could be a good event for the community. Mr. President, I said, "I don't know the protocol. If we are to go ahead with this, do we, as a board, say yes now, or..." It's the first time I've had an issue like this as a committee, so I don't know.
I think it's a wonderful idea, and I think that your committee will make a recommendation to put it on the workshop agenda, and we will discuss it. And I think that, you know, the board will consider it. And I think it's a wonderful opportunity to show the wonderful facility we have and also the PTSA members who work so diligently at the facility to make things work for us. So I think that will be a very good thing.
So if I'm understanding, you know, we have to wait till our next meeting to yes, make it a yes or a no? Because then we're going to start to get short on time.
Can we make administrative change this evening?
I'm just asking because it's, oh, sorry. There's not a lot of time. If we're going to do this, we got to do it correctly and nicely and make, you know, make it an event for the community.
Mr. President, if you don't mind, in the past, what we've done is we've discussed it openly with all board members, and then at the end of the discussion, if everyone was comfortable voting on it, we voted on it. And if, I'm okay with going with that procedure if everyone else is openly discussing it, giving their opinions, and then we can openly vote it for Mr. De Prima and his committee. Because he is against the clock, he is backed up against the wall with the clock.
I happen to believe we need more of a proposal because I was at that meeting and there were a lot of ideas that were floated. So, so to sit here and have a discussion, I don't know what we'd be voting on, whether or not to do it, I don't know, is the issue. I mean, it becomes a big managerial portion. It's the day, it is, as Mr. De Prima said, it is the day of the pinkout, it is, it is, it is, it is.
It is.
And then somebody was talking about having some kind of food critic there. I mean, it may, we, I just think we need to have a little bit more of a finite proposal. It's not necessarily about the idea, but it may be some of the other things that go along with it.
If I can clarify for the, just the... Superintendent will clarify. To move this along, if you're going to decide to do that, it's something that should come out of committee, out of that committee, do a straw poll in that committee. It's not something that gets voted on at a Board of Education meeting, whether we're going to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony there. If you decide to do that, you direct the administration, and we support your direction, whatever direction you're going to go. So at your committee meeting, you could do it through that or what have you, and then you give us direction, and we'll support it in any way we can. Mr. De Prima, to answer your question, if you would circulate your plan to the entire board, obviously something we don't have to vote on, and then the administration will work to implement your request.
Okay. There'll be an email to everybody tomorrow. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. De Prima.
So, how many, who else was, what other, what other board members were at the meeting?
Just you, I believe.
All right, so we need three.
You and myself. I did present it to the PTSA last night, they're on board. They'll obviously man the standards, you know, like they normally would for the game, just a little earlier. Mrs. Luci has volunteered to take care of the PR part of it, and...
So what exactly are we talking about? This is a standard ribbon-cutting ceremony like we have on Lombardi Field? We're not going to do any type of speeches and set up a podium or anything like that? We're going to do a ceremony, you're looking to do a ceremonial ribbon-cutting ceremony, correct?
I, my thoughts with Mrs. Luci would be the same as when we did the field, maybe on a little smaller scale.
Like a grand opening type of scenario, correct?
Yeah, even though the stand's been operational for three-quarters of a year, it hasn't been fully operational until this past weekend when the Rebels used it, and this coming Friday when the PTSA will use it. It is now 100%, you know, a full-service facility, and it's going to be a lot different than it was with the little stand in the back.
Okay, what you would do is just circulate the proposal, and then the board will consider it, and then we would direct the administration to do it as, as, as an event, but it does not need board approval.
Thank you.
Moving forward, hearing of the residents on any agenda item.
Good evening, board members and administration. My issue with full-day kindergarten is, it's a good thing. What used to be, when I was on the board before, the proposed budget was $33 million. What you're planning is like substantially less money. You're going to get the most out of it. The money that come back to the district is huge compared to what it would have been. The use of your facilities, I'm not sure exactly how you're accomplishing it, but given the past and what you're accomplishing now, I think it's well overdue. I think legislation should be there to mandate full-day kindergarten, which would substantially help the state revenue. And so, how soon are you planning on implementing this if you haven't already? I'd just like to know the timeframe of it, and how soon you do this, it helps with the revenue coming in, and how soon would you expect that to happen, if you have an idea
As it, as currently stands, we do have two operational full-day kindergarten pilot programs running within the district. As far as that, this administration moves it the direction of the Board of Education with the support of a full-day implementation of kindergarten. We would have our architect do the proposals with the state of New Jersey that are necessary, and would be hopefully, hopefully moving towards that for the 14, 15 school year. If not, at a later date. Thank you, Mr. Jocelyn. Anyone else like to come to the podium?
So, okay, it's my understanding that there's not going to be a full-day kindergarten this year, is that correct? In McDivitt School?
This current year?
This current year now. It's not going to be implemented, that's what I kind of thought this was all about tonight, because, I guess, I misunderstood.
Well, at the, this school year has already started.
No, I understand that.
It's already been budgeted for, and the staffing and everything is in place. We would need the time to prepare for it, that's why we're hoping it's on the agenda tonight for resolution going forward, so that enough of the planning and staffing can be put in place for 14, 15.
And what about the SMART boards for all of the special education program in McDivitt that I know some of the teachers had not received yet, as long as we were on that
I would have to speak to Principal Coletti from the school to see what was budgeted for, where it's missing.
Okay.
And I will assure you, I will take care of that, this conversation tomorrow, and discuss that with Roseanne Moran, our Director of Technology, and to ensure that wherever there was budgeted for, wherever the work orders were to install them, I have a, a good idea of where they're going. I know our maintenance department and our technology department has been working many hours to get the ones that we do have allocated up and in the classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a question? You seem disappointed that there's no kindergarten in McDivitt. I mean, you're full kindergarten, or?
I'm full, I'm full for all-day kindergarten forever, because my community wants their kindergarten all day, in full-time district, and...
Sorry. And I just, you know, would have liked full-day kindergarten for my daughter because she's so used to going all day. So this is a little different for her. She's loving half-day because she goes to the aftercare program, but I would, you know, like it full-day. And I'm, my school is McDivitt, not Cheesecake, so I couldn't put her there.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your input.
Good evening, everyone. My children, I have twin girls, and they are currently in Voorhees Public School, and I would just like to bring it to your attention that it is disappointing. My daughters were in the preschool program in South Amboy, and I moved them over back into Olbridge to attend public school. This is their first year of kindergarten. And going from an eight-and-a-half-hour day to a two-and-a-half, it's disappointing. They had so much fun in the preschool. I was really looking forward to hearing some good news as to full-day kindergarten for this year, but with you mentioning or stating that it won't be in effect until 2014, 2015, it is disappointing. And already, with my one daughter, her reading levels, I already see a drastic change even in just basic math and counting. So for the parents that do have children that will benefit from the 2014, 2015 school year with kindergarten as full-day, I strongly, strongly recommend it because I already see my daughter struggling with just basic math in kindergarten, already struggling. So it's, it's disappointing to hear it, you know, that it won't be in effect because I obviously won't benefit from it, but to go from an eight-and-a-half-hour day to two hours, two-and-a-half hours, it's not enough, it's not enough. So I, I hope, on behalf of all the other parents that do have children in the 2014, 2015 grade year, that the motion does get passed because I definitely stand for it, so...
Come on, you're a young lady, you can handle it.
Hi, Riley Leibowitz. I started teaching in, in Olbridge in 1963. Most of you aren't even born yet, but this is sort of like a horror story, and a wonderful horror story. Turned out great. We, we were in the temple for the first two years because there were no kindergarten rooms in any of the schools. Finally, after the second year, Southwood had an extension put on it, so we had a room. We had 50 children in each session, two teachers. One was the aide, you know, in the morning, and the morning teacher was the aide in the afternoon. Well, after teaching two years in one room that was minute, and having a lot of problems with children, and not being able to take care of the ones that really were bright enough to do something other than color and dance and sing, when I got to Southwood, I instituted the program of, we would sort of test them. We tested the children, we had our own verbal test, you know, they, we assumed that they couldn't read. And there were no preschools. Miss May's Nursery, that was it. And they came in like they were blank pages, and it was so wonderful. I started a reading program for the children in the morning who could, who I felt had the ability to learn basic words. Same thing in the afternoon. The other teacher, she started her, her reading program, and then we went to math. So here were kids who had no background whatsoever. They hadn't been to preschool, they didn't have any, you know, anyone at home to help them because they didn't know what to do. Here they were, learning how to read. So this thought started in 1965 when I arrived at Southwood, and I hate to say it, but it's taken until 2013 and '14 to put it actually into use. Children want to learn. There is, you can't say to me, "This kid doesn't want to learn." There's a wave handling children who can, and handling children who are not as adept as others. Every child wants to learn. Those kids walked, when I, they went to first grade, Dr. Joan George was teaching first grade at Southwood, and she said, "I knew immediately which kids came from, you know, the kindergarten, your kindergarten." We did have a third kindergarten. In those days, people were reproducing a lot faster. But we had, those kids were, they couldn't wait to get to first grade, they were so excited. "I'm going to have a book." Because, you know, we got the Sally, Dick and Jane spot and so on. We had that book from a closet that probably was locked up for 20 years. And it was, it was amazing. So not only do I support it, but I, I support it, I have supported it since 1965. So finally, it's going to be done, I hope. Thank you very much.
You don't have to go back to your seats, you can stand by the podium and wait. You can just wait. So you got to go back and forth.
This microphone thing. Hi, I am a parent of a child that is going to be turning five next year, and we bought a house probably in 2006. If I wouldn't have known back then that this township didn't have full-time kindergarten, I wouldn't have moved here. I, in my day job, actually am senior education advocate, and all that I do all day long is to deal with New York City Departments of Education and the lack of assistance to children. And I could tell you that by my own experience working in New York City, if you don't put the money upfront to the kids, you're going to be paying sometime later when they move to the higher grades. I could tell you, this is what I do all day long, fighting with the department to provide services for kids that didn't get the appropriate education in the beginning, and now the second grade and third grade, and they're so behind. So obviously, I'm here in support of full-time K, and in support of also, as a community, what is it that we need to do in order to make sure that we're going to have full-time in 14, 15? Because the superintendent mentioned, yes, but maybe, I don't, I don't really want a maybe. I want to know that it's going to be there for my child because it wasn't for my other child when she turned five. And if there's anything as a community that we need to do, fundraising, whatever it is that is needed, I'm willing to start working with you in doing something because we need our children to learn. We are working with a different generation. Kids are eager to learn. There is no more staying at home, and then first grade, and then you don't know anything. Kids want to learn, and I want my child to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, good evening to the board and good evening, everyone in the community. My name is Mrs. Johnson, and I've lived in Olbridge now about 15 years, and I want to echo the sentiment that I'm hearing tonight. I am totally 100% in support of full-day kindergarten. I have two small children. My oldest is a fourth grader at Cheesecake Elementary School. He loves learning, he's so excited. And I only wish I had had full-day kindergarten when he came along. I too work, you know, full-time, my husband works full-time. I teach actually in Edison Township. And, you know, it's just really a necessity for that as well as for the children. My little one is four and a half, he'll be five, so he'll be ready for kindergarten when that next year comes. He'll be five in December, so hopefully, you know, by then, the pilot program will actually be a full program for the entire district. I just want to echo that sentiment, okay?
Good evening. My name is Allison Bender. I'm an educator, and most importantly, I'm a mom of two little boys. My son, Lucas, attends Southwood School, and Lucas is in the special education program, and he was very lucky to benefit from a full-day kindergarten through the special ed program. And I only wish that my younger son, Gavin, who is three, when it's time for him... And I only wish that my younger son Gavin, who is three, when it's time for him to start kindergarten, that he has that same advantage of a full-day kindergarten. And as much as I want to speak from my heart, the facts don't lie. So here are some of them. Long-term data demonstrates that children in full-day kindergarten classes show greater reading and mathematics achievement compared to those in half-day classes, especially lower-income and minority students. I teach senior English at Marlboro High School and I know how competitive it is when children are looking into colleges. They need every advantage we could possibly give him, especially the lower-income kids. Full-day kindergarten starts, you know, it starts the ball rolling. For some children also, full-day kindergarten is their first experience in an organized classroom. It's the first time that a teacher will be able to diagnose any kind of a learning disability. The sooner these children start getting services, the sooner they start learning their skills and the sooner they start succeeding. Like my son Lucas, who is doing very well. I would love to see other kids who have learning disabilities, have them diagnosed at a younger age and give them every opportunity that they can afford. To echo what this lady said, which you said, great stuff, awesome. Research shows that the money that you get back or that you'd be saving as a district is a three to one, meaning that every dollar that is invested is three dollars that's saved later from remedial classes, in dropouts and everything trying to help a community. These children will thrive if they have a full-day kindergarten. Research also shows that five-year-olds do better in a setting that allows them more time to learn and to explore. The social gains are exponential. So again, as much as I want to speak from the heart and tell you, please give my kid full-day kindergarten. You know, as many of the other moms who are talking about how tough it is when you work full-time, I work full-time, my husband works full-time. I'm sure there are many of us here who are in the same boat. Paying for daycare is really hard. I'd rather not have to pay for daycare through kindergarten. But really, I just want him to benefit from everything that the awesome Southwood School would have to offer him. So please, I implore you, please go ahead with full-day kindergarten. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christina Reclitis. I've been an Old Bridge resident now for nine years. I have a daughter Emily who is seven years old. She goes to Cooper School, she's in second grade. My question to you is, you're saying maybe, possibly for 2014, 2015? I have twin boys that will be hopefully entering kindergarten in Old Bridge next year. When will we know by? Because, because to be honest, like, like, will we know by the spring? Like, when will we know by? Because, to be honest, many private schools, you have to let them know by March, February. And if I don't know, I'm most definitely probably going to move out of the district because to pay private for twins is hard to do. So when will we know by?
Hopefully tonight with the vote.
Oh, we're going to vote? Oh, okay, we didn't know that, okay.
I just much qualify the answer. The, the answer, what you're saying is, will be, the process will begin tonight with a vote from the Board of Education. And that's subject to all the approvals and everything being taking place going forward. The longer we wait to approve it beyond tonight, the less of a chance that window of opportunity is available for 14, 15.
Hi, good evening. I'm very excited to hear that we might actually take a vote on this tonight. I'm very much in favor of full-day kindergarten. I've been an Old Bridge resident for 38 years. I, I grew up here all my life. I have two children, one of which is going to be benefiting hopefully from full-day kindergarten in the fall. My daughter is in third grade at McDivitt School. And I, I can honestly say that I'm thankful that she, I sent her to a private kindergarten because she would have never been prepared with half-day kindergarten for first grade. I think it's a real disservice to, you know, all of the students that are coming in, some of which have been home and haven't even been in a structured environment. My son currently is in an eight and a half hour day, so I echo what the other woman had said. To take him from an eight and a half hour day to a two and a half hour day, I would never do that. So I'm really hoping that the board approves and that the residents approve full-day kindergarten. I think you're going to see a tremendous difference in the amount of material that the children can learn. You're going to see them really thrive, get to socially interact and have time to really be a true kindergartner, get to learn all those things, you know, not just shapes and numbers, but, you know, have time to maybe have some, have gym, have, you know, interact with other kids, you know, really learn the mathematics, mathematics and the English. Because when first grade comes along, it goes very quickly and they won't be prepared. So I urge you and implore you to please initiate full-day kindergarten in Old Bridge.
Good evening. I just wanted to say, I have two daughters, I've lived here in Old Bridge for 12 years now. My daughter attended Voorhees School last year in the kindergarten program. I am very much for the full-day program. She attended last year half-day, she was in the afternoon session. By 10 o'clock in the morning, she was bored daily and wanted to know when it was time to go to school. Not just with her, but other families that I know of, it is a big deterrent, the half-day program. Many parents do scrimp and save and send them other places for kindergarten because of the difficulties of the half-day program. Also, you also have a lot of children now that go to pre, full-day preschool that are going from an eight-hour day to now a two and a half hour day. And one disadvantage that I, I know other people have mentioned was the socialization aspect. My daughter would go in for 12:30, she barely got to know any of her peers in her class because they spent the whole time just being shuffled from one subject to the next, to gym, to back to the room, and they never even got to know one another. So if socialization is important, I believe full-day kindergarten can help that as well as the academic aspect. Thank you.
I'll actually just start off with a question. For the full-day kindergarten, what would be the school hours proposed for this upcoming school year?
If the proposal is approved, they would be the same as the regular school day for an elementary student.
Okay, understood. I think it's pretty clear from the educational research presented by yourself, Mr. Superintendent, and by the sentiments of the community, that we're all behind full-day kindergarten. But really what it comes down to is board approval. And what that really entails is financial approval. And I implore you to find a financial way to make this happen. The community wants it and I think that's what our kids need.
Good evening. I have a second grader over at Miller School who did go to half-day kindergarten and everyone says it's just not enough. She'd go to school in the morning and every day there'd be an elective, music, gym, library. So in that short time, she wasn't in the classroom learning very much. Two afternoons a week, she went to, I had sent her to a private kindergarten enrichment program where she learns more in those two afternoons than she learns probably in the whole year in the public elementary school. My son is in a private pre-K now where the work that he's doing and probably most kids in a preschool program, he's there all day, he's learning work that's kindergarten and first-grade level. These kids of today need more and want more. They're going into kindergarten already reading and two and a half hours are really just not coming out ahead. You guys, you know, in second grade, she's on the iPad in her classroom, which is unbelievable that there's the money and funding for that. But if the kids in kindergarten don't learn more than ABCs and 1, 2, 3s, they're going to be left behind. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board members. I'm very glad to see that we are going forward with this program. And I have to tell you that this program dates back, when we first discussed this, it had to be back in maybe 2003, okay? Unfortunately, at that point in time, there wasn't enough money to generate it. I know that there were board members that were on the board previous to the board members that are there now, along with superintendents that were also involved in looking into this program. We went and we took trips down to Tom's River to see what their program was all about. And we wound up instituting a preschool program, which is a wonderful program that we have in Old Bridge today, that is very effective to the children. To go into a full-day kindergarten right now, okay, when you put a child into a kindergarten program that we have right now, which is half-day, by the time they get into the classroom, by the time they get settled, by the time they are able to discuss and learn whatever academics it is according to the core curriculum, okay, and they have their snack, the two and a half hours that they had for kindergarten comes down to maybe an hour or maybe an hour and 15 minutes. That isn't enough time to educate a child. Statistically, we have found that the younger a child learns, the faster and better they learn and the more they comprehend. It certainly would be to the advantage of every resident in Old Bridge who has a child coming forward to be in a full-day kindergarten. It certainly would definitely have more housing going on where people would be moving to Old Bridge. Because let's face it, when you look to go and move into a community, you're going to look at every aspect of what that community can offer, including your school district, the test scores and what you have as far as your school district is concerned. And when you see that there is a full-day kindergarten there, this, this is what is going to draw people to Old Bridge. We have a before and after-school program and we have a half-day kindergarten right now, okay? If we put a full-day kindergarten in, you have an after-school program which is run by the township of Old Bridge and it's run through our school district, that the children can go right into it after kindergarten is over until they can get picked up. And the best part of all of it is, it hasn't been brought up, is the fact that when you have your preschool program and it's run by your school district, a public school district, they can start instituting the core curriculum. So by the time they are five years old and they go into kindergarten, they have already been introduced to the curriculum. You cannot do that with a private daycare or preschool. So once they walk out of a preschool program, say Old Bridge's, and go into kindergarten, they have that advantage. So that when they do have to start taking their tests in third grade, they have already become accustomed to and learned a lot of the curriculum going forward for their tests, which then certainly is to the advantage of Old Bridge. When the state looks at your testing and they determine how much money you're going to get based on your testing and how good your schools are. So in all of those aspects, it certainly is to the advantage of Old Bridge to put in a full-day kindergarten. I know I gave Mr. Cedidino the booklet back in 2008, when we had architects come in, look at all of the schools to figure out what it was going to take to put in a full-day kindergarten and the amount of money, which now has reduced. So I think going forward, okay, if we have that money in which to do it, we need to jump on board, get it going, get it started so that next year, all of the children and not just two schools can have a full-day kindergarten for these children. Because that's what we're all here for, is to educate them the best way that we possibly can. So let's go forward, let's get this program into effect, which it should have been a while ago, but unfortunately, we didn't have the money. That was one of the biggest reasons. It was even going up for referendum, okay? And let's do what we need to do to educate every single child in Old Bridge. That's what we're here for.
Mrs. Hartman? Mrs. Hart, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was your granddaughter that was in the preschool program in Tom's River? That's how we ended up going down there?
Mrs. Hartman? Could you use the microphone, please? Very hard to hear and you got probably about 30 seconds left.
Okay. The socialization skills that they get also far exceeds anything else. Tom's River was very successful with it. We all went down there at the time, former board members, former superintendents of schools. And we would have put the program in had we had the money at that point in time, but we didn't have it, okay? Now, if we have it, it's the best thing that we could do for every single child in Old Bridge. You all know how I feel about this program, it's very near and dear to my heart. Please listen to what the public is saying to you. Let's go forward and let's do the right thing. And Donna Kibler, I would like to thank you for everything that you've done in getting all of this information for us because you were certainly a very big part of it going back to 2006. Please, vote for this and let's go forward for our children. Thank you.
Good evening. After hearing everyone speak, I just want to say that I echo what has been said regarding the educational, um, the educational improvements that could be had by full-day kindergarten and I support it, I wish my children had it. I just wanted to ask, we, a lot has been stated about the fixed cost, the one-time cost to implement, which has been greatly reduced. And I hope it is truly feasible at that cost because I remember at the time, bathrooms and the size of the room had to be a certain size, square footage, and the state was pretty definite about those requirements. But all that being said, I haven't heard anything said about how many additional teachers do we need and what is the ongoing cost? Because I think the public wants it, but the public also has a right to know how much this will impact year after year after year. And that's a cost that also should be made known. Is it one teacher per school? And what is the average salary plus benefits that is estimated? Thank you.
The, the plan at this point, and it's a preliminary plan, is that there will be 12 additional classroom teachers and there'll be one additional related arts teacher.
Okay, 12 additional classroom teachers at a starting salary of approximately $45,000, right?
The starting salary for teachers is BA1, which is $45,061, I believe.
Right, and then you've estimated approximately $15,000 for the share of benefits paid by the board?
Yes.
So about $60,000 per teacher. So it's just that, obviously, there is more support and I don't know any parent that has a child that would be five that wouldn't want full-day kindergarten, especially in this time where you have both parents working and paying for daycare, et cetera. But I think that everyone should be made aware of the total cost of the full-day kindergarten. And thank you.
Mayor Henry?
Thank you, board members, administration, residents. I come in peace. I do not come to cause any type of controversy at your meeting and please understand, I support the, the board in this district 100%. My administration is, is here for you. Tonight, I would just like to speak briefly about, I believe it's on page eight, item seven on the miscellaneous. Where we stand here tonight and thank the board for considering our attempt to construct a small memorial at the Lombardi Field complex for four boys who were killed on October 8th, 1966 in a horrible accident on Route 516. Now, I, I was in kindergarten at the time and I don't remember. I do not remember this event and I don't ever remember my parents talking about it. So obviously, it was traumatic for the town at the time, it was a different town, it was a small town. And to have four young boys, Larry Bishop, George Perez, Edward, Edward Mark Chowinski and John McCallahan, killed on a Saturday afternoon, that Monday, there was four empty school desks in the school district. All the boys were students in the schools. Edward was on the freshman football team at the time. Larry and Edward were alumni of the Old Bridge Rams, Pop Warner Football Team at the time. But one common bond, the one glue that glued the families together in these four boys were that they all left Lombardi Field that Saturday afternoon. And the last thing on those boys' minds, and I'm sure the last thing on their families' minds, was that they were not going to return home that minds, was that they were not going to return home that day. And I think that's why we stand here tonight and ask that you allow us to construct a small memorial at Lombardi Field. The families, that's the first place that comes to their mind when they talk about this horrible event. It's also important to know that 13, 13 brothers and sisters of these four boys came up through the Old Bridge Public School System. And, you know, it, you know, as, as an elected official, I know you put yourselves in the spotlight, no pun intended, tonight, and you're asked every day on a daily basis, why? Why do you do this? I'm asked at least five times a day, why are you doing this to yourself? And I answer immediately, is because every day I get up and I have the opportunity to do something good for someone. And this opportunity came to me last year, when the father, a WWII veteran, came to an, our council meeting and informed the council of what had happened, that a monument or a plaque of some sort was, was placed in the early 70s, and somewhere between then and now, the plaque was either vandalized, it was destroyed in a fire, but no one, no one knew what happened to it. And no one made an attempt to, to replace it. And that's where I felt the opportunity, that opportunity to do something good. So tonight, you're, you're, you know, you're given that same opportunity tonight to do something good. And I think that's one of the reasons, you know, the residents of Old Bridge, you know, put you in that position. We all know that we're faced with tough decisions. But this, this to me is a no-brainer, that you, that you helped this, this family, who I think needs, the siblings of this family who need, who need something like this. And this is your opportunity to help them. I have with me three of the sisters of the boys, and, you know, if the board would like any additional information, we plan to place this on the northerly side of Lombardi Field, to the north of the bleachers, not near the entrance where you walk in. It'll be but a secondary access. The family is very pleased with that. It's isolated. It's, it's an area of the Lombardi Field that really not too many people go to, not too many people see it. So it'll be a place for the family to go and just reflect. The boys are buried out of state. They don't, you know, it's a, it's a hardship for them to go visit the gravesite. So I just ask for your consideration, your compassion, as a fellow human being, as a, as a resident of Old Bridge, as many a parent, a mother and father, brothers and sisters, to do the right thing tonight. And I'm going to thank you in advance, because I know everyone sitting up there is a good person, and I would just ask your, ask your support tonight. And I'm serious, very serious. So, thank you. I have the plaque here with me, if anyone would like to see it, or if anyone has any questions.
I have a question, Mayor Henry. I understand Lombardi Field is the last place these boys were together, but how come not their respective schools? What's the significance to Lombardi?
I think I said that this is where those boys were, where they having, they were having, you know, the time in their lives, probably at a football game. I came from one Saturday night, Old Bridge knocked off number 10 Saraval. I mean, you know, I, I went to Cedar Ridge, but my best time was around Lombardi Field, you know, being involved in sports, which these boys were. I relate more to Lombardi Field than I do, well, Cedar Ridge High School isn't here no more. This is the auditorium, but when I think of high school, I think of Lombardi Field, so.
Excuse me, sir. Also, John was a senior at the high school. That's Tom's death.
Yes, one of the boys, John McCallahan, was, was a senior in the high school that October. He never got a chance to graduate. He never got a chance to take his senior picture. There was something in the year, but there's a lot of history to this. Over the year, this past year, we've had the opportunity to go back and get the newspaper articles for an event that I really didn't know about until last year. And I think as a resident of Old Bridge, we should, we should know about these, these events. Old Bridge is no stranger to tragedy. We all know that. So it's important as residents that we do remember that these tragedies, 47 years ago. So it's important that we do remember these tragedies for, for ourselves and for the families.
Mayor, were you able to get one put back on Marlborough Road? I know one of the boy's dads had wandered it at Marlborough Road. Were you able to get it put back there?
Mr. Colabella, the, when the plaque was originally, the plaque that you speak about, the original plaque, I believe was in the early 70s. I don't know if it was a plaque, I don't know if it was a monument, I don't know what it was. But the father, Mr. Bishop, had left the state for a few years, and he came back to the state of New Jersey. The first place he went was to see a plaque in his son's name, and the plaque was gone. And he inquired about it, and he couldn't get any type of, no answers. Because, as you know, the Old Bridge Rams turned into the Old Bridge Knights, and he went back, I believe the Old Bridge Knights met in effort to go back and find out what happened. And there really was no history. And I believe the family saw that the field on Marlborough Road really wasn't the place now, that they would like to, it's off the beaten path, or sometimes, you know, we don't know how long the Knights are going to be at that location.
I didn't know if the field was even open anymore.
Again, they, they really would like the permanent place be at Lombardi Field, because we know, we all know Lombardi Field is going to be there for as long as Old Bridge is Old Bridge. But we don't know that same fate for the field off Marlborough Road. I mean, this summer, there was a circus on it. So we, we don't know, as the township improves its facilities, and, and, you know, make other areas available, we don't know the future. And I can't speak for the Old Bridge Knights.
With the beautiful area you have for the 9/11 victims, an additional plaque would be good there also. It'd be, you know, that's a beautiful place.
9/11, that's, it is. We had our ceremony there. Whoever had an opportunity to attend that on September 11th, you've seen nine of the 11 families came back for that horrible event, and that was 12 people. So.
Thank you.
I just ask for your support.
Any other board members have any questions for Mayor Henry? Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll discuss this when it comes up, up on the agenda.
Mr. Henry, if you don't mind, can you kindly read the plaque? We'd put you on the spot. I know you're a member of the Old Bridge system.
This plaque commemorates the lives of Larry Bishop, age 12, George Perez, age 12, Edward Marchewinski, age 14, and John McCallahan, age 17, who were killed in a tragic motor vehicle accident in Old Bridge Township, at the time it was early Madison Township, but it was Old Bridge Township on October 8th, 1966. May all those passing this memorial take time to reflect on these abbreviated lives and embrace the joys of their own lives and that of their children. As long as life and memory last, we will remember thee. 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to, about anything that's on the agenda? Agenda items only? Yes? Please state your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shane Hage. So I've been listening tonight about how everybody wants a full day kindergarten, and I'm in full support of it. I hear a lot about our community, how we want a plaque for individuals, how we celebrate an Eagle Scout, how we have people from Old Bridge High School Senate talking about the great things that we're doing here. What I want to make sure that the board understands is this is not a short-sighted decision. Don't look at just a dollar and cents today. We all know that if you take a dollar, you put it into your stock market accounts, you're saving for retirement, it's going to grow two, three, four times, fold over. That's what we're looking for from the parents. You're asking for more from the parents. You're asking us to contribute back to, I apologize, which school, but the PTA gave $20,000. Imagine what we could do if you help us give us more time back. Between my wife and I, we have three kids. We spend time taking those kids, shuttling them back and forth, drop off one in the morning, oh, got to drop off the kid at kindergarten in the afternoon, pick them both up, or vice versa. How many of us haven't done that already? When you have multiple kids, it's difficult. Having a full day kindergarten would free us up to do more things for the community. It would encourage our kids. My kids had an opportunity to watch me complete my master's degree just a couple of years ago. How am I going to go to my child and say, look, I can invest in myself, I can spend the time on me, but I can't convince the board of Old Bridge to invest in you and your education? That doesn't make any sense to me. And I don't think that makes any sense to our community, who I see working hard and contributing back to us, to, to you as the, the board. I really hope that you will approve this tonight and move it forward for the 2014, 2015 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Very well, I'm closing the public portion of this meeting. Moving forward, curriculum. Item one, can I have a motion, move curriculum?
Andriani will move curriculum.
Donofrio, a second, Mr. President.
Thank you. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Colabella?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Orsilly?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Finance, items one through four, may I have a motion, please?
Donofrio, make a motion to move finance, items one through four?
Can I have a second?
Andriani.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Orsilly?
Yes.
Colabella?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Non-certificated personnel, other, item number one, may I have a motion, please?
I'll move it. I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Ma, discussion?
Just, just clarifying, this is contractual, yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor.
Donofrio?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Orsilly?
Yes.
Colabella?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Certificated personnel, one through four, as amended, may I have a motion, please?
Donofrio, make that motion.
Andriani will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Discussion.
Since my mic is still on, I didn't, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to reach out to the board members. Dr. Holker is now going to head up and be in charge of personnel. So as the board committee person for personnel, she did reach out to me and let me know about some of these additions. Most of them are all replacements. The only one that is new is for us to be in compliance with the special needs, paraprofessional one-on-one aid. So I did go through all of these, including steps, you know, that I always ask about steps. So take my word for it or not, but I, I did investigate all of these ahead of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, roll call, please.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Andriani?
Yes.
Orsilly?
Yes.
Colabella?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Donofrio?
Yes, since my ex, add that Madison Park Elementary, when Ms. Holker, Dr. Holker left, I says, oh, boy, it's going to be some big shoes to folks. I know she was phenomenal, wonderful down there. But seeing the recommendation from the superintendent, John Phillips, I think we filled those shoes pretty well. He's a wonderful human being. I have plavage of my children attending 15 years of carpentry school with him. And Ms. Cedidino, you did a great job choosing this individual. Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Miscellaneous items one through eight.
Separate item three for discussion.
That's number three, Mr. Weber? Any other separations?
And number seven.
And number seven. So we're separating three and number seven.
Right.
Clarification, we have four committee meetings, this is, oh, I'm sorry, this is July and August. I wanted to make sure Mr. De Prima's was on there, but that will be on the next agenda.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to make, I'm going to